Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for November 18, 2024. The first matter on our agenda is the approval of, it says the November 4th minute. I don't think we received those yet, but we got the October one. Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading the other ones this morning. My mistake. Okay, I was reading the other ones. Okay, so November 4th. Anybody have any questions about the November 4th meetings?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the November 4th minutes as submitted.
Second, the motion. Motion, second, hold in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Those minutes are approved. Okay, so our first public hearing this evening is 197 Beacon Street Public Shade Tree Removal Hearing. In accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 87.5 and Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinances, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to the removal of 61 total trees at 197 Beacon Street. Three proposed trees removed with diameters greater than 24 inches and the remaining 58 with diameter of less than 24 inches. The trees and their roots are hazardous to the drinking water infrastructure and undermine the water storage tanks. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Stephen Duchesne from the Water Utility. I want to thank you for giving us the time to come up with an updated plan. Our project engineer, Peter Lyons, is here to submit the proposal for this updated plan. We were able to reduce the amount of trees that were going to be removed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, please, sir.
There we go. Great. All right, can everyone see that? I'm gonna, why don't I give you three copies so you can see?
Okay, can, oh, okay, we have them on the screen now. Dylan just put them on the screen. I mean, is it this big one?
Want to share the point here?
Yeah, we'll share it.
Oh, I got two.
There you go.
There you go.
All righty.
Okay.
All right, so we heard your comments last time.
Does have your name and address, if I can, please?
Sure. My name's Peter Lyons with Woodard &amp; Kern. We're consultant to the Water Utility. So we heard your comments last time. We've revised our plan. So at this point in time, we're proposing to remove 53 trees. And namely, these are the trees shown in red on page one. So if we zoom in here, these are trees located largely on the embankment of the two underground storage tanks. These trees pose a risk to the structural integrity of the city's underground water storage tanks. So the two tanks you're seeing, the square one and the circular one, they're about 30 feet deep. And they store about 90% of the city's water. These, the roots within these trees, there's studies that have shown that roots can go to three to five times the width of the tree canopy. So when you look at, for example, I'm going to switch to this last page here. You can see large trees surrounding the tanks. It would be pretty likely to have these roots be budding up against the concrete storage tanks. So we can, although we haven't seen the roots get inside of the tanks yet, it would be pretty reasonable to think that over time, as the trees grow, there's a risk to damage these tanks. In which case, you know, the integrity of the Lowell's water distribution system would be at risk. So what we're proposing is to clear, clear the area in the hatch, the hatched area, and remove 53 trees identified in red, both along the underground storage tanks and within the open rez, which is a dam. So we'd remove the trees down to six inches, clear everything, and then loom and seed. And I know that one of the, so I guess any questions on, on the removal and why removal of this is important? I guess while we're talking about that, there's guidance from the American Water, AWWA. This is on the last page here. You'll see a figure. What I'm going to show you in the top-left corner is those underground storage tanks as depicted by Google Earth, 2024. These are the large tree growth. Just under that photo, I have a typo here, but that's actually 2004. Same area, not as many trees. So these trees have just naturally grown. And they really should be moved, removed. The other photos you can see from Lawrence, New Bedford, and Taunton are similarly constructed underground water storage tanks. All of these are clear of trees within the embankment. So it would be typical for municipality and a water utility to not have these trees growing around the storage tanks. So I guess with that, I'd like to ask questions regarding the removal of trees.
I do have a question.
Sure.
If that's the right time to ask. So I see that several trees that, one is on embankment to the south of the number five, maybe, and six. So there are a few that seems like you have now going to protect from removal. So one is on the embankment. So are those not affecting the water tank?
Correct. Yeah, so five and six are just, they're close enough to the storage tank that we felt that they should be removed. The larger trees down here that we had originally shown to remove, we don't believe that those should pose a risk to the structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's similar to the last plan here. We had shown to remove this tree notably, which is a memorial tree. It's off the embankment, so that should be clear as well.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Anything further at this time?
Well, and I know last time we discussed wanting to have a plan on where to replace trees.
Yes.
So we've developed that plan.
Okay.
Would you like me to review?
Yes, if you would, please, sir.
Sure, absolutely. So our proposed plan at this point, we had initially thought to utilize the city's urban forest master plan, plant trees along priority areas in the city. Although after, after some more careful consideration, we've proposed to put essentially these trees back in the Centerville area as shown on this plan. And by the city code, we are planning to remove 53 trees. Two of them are larger than 24 inches, so that means we need to replace two additional trees to make 55. And what our plan shows right now is proposing to plant about 83 trees within this area. So this plan in front of you, as shared on the screen, this is the second page. Bridge Street, Beacon Street, Myrtle Street, and then in front of the wastewater treatment plant. More detailed view of each of these locations are on the following pages. I can walk through those. If you go to the next page, this is on Bridge Street. The green dots are the proposed locations. What we'd like to do is take advantage of. I'll zoom into a little concept here. Within the sidewalk, there's a brick front. There are a number of existing trees in that sidewalk. This is page number three, as well as some empty tree boxes as well. We'd plan to do here, as you can see in the markup, the red maple trees. Those are, those are proposed. They're not existing. Essentially to fill in this corridor where it makes sense, watching out for existing utilities, those sorts of things. When you replant trees in this dense urban environment, you've got to make sure that you're not impacting traffic site lines, existing utilities, those sorts of things. So what this shows is just that conceptual plan here. So that's Bridge Street. If I walk through the next, next few drawings, we have Beacon Street. Similar thing here. Grass, tree frontage, plant trees in that. Close further south on, oops, sorry. Further south on Beacon. And then the last few would be on Myrtle Street. And in front of the wastewater. Again, I think it's obvious that the red maples are the, you know, conceptual proposed here, so.
Okay, so your total figures, how many, how many is coming down now and how many are being replanted?
53.
53 coming down?
Coming down.
Yep.
That requires, based on Lowell City Code, to replace with 55.
Okay.
So at a minimum, we know that we need to do that.
Gotcha.
What we're proposing to do here is 83 tree plantings on Bridge, Beacon, Myrtle, and in front of the wastewater treatment.
Because of the bigger trees, you have to replace the three-to-one ratio. What do the other ones is one-to-one?
Yeah, it's, for 24 inch, greater than 24 inches, it's two-to-one.
Right.
We just, we showed 83 because when we, when you go through the corridor, you just kind of want to, you want to make it look good.
Right.
So.
Anything else at this time?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. We'll ask you some questions shortly. Thank you very much.
Great.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll turn the meeting over to the public. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this proposal, anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Any in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. This time we'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Bishop.
Appreciate the replanting plan that was submitted and rethinking about actually putting the trees back into the neighborhood. I suspect the residents appreciate that. Definitely don't want you to clear cut everything, but if I, I think I took a picture of just about 53 trees when I went out there. So you're definitely on, on the Christian Street side on the slope. Looks like there's still going to be some trees, the smaller caliber trees. It looks like at some point you'll have like a maintenance program where you'll be coming back, I suspect that is.
Yeah, so in, so in the figure that we have on the screen and in front of you, the red trees, the reason why they're colored red is because they're greater than six inch. Lowell City Code says, greater than six inch, that's a tree, and if you cut it down, you have to remove it. A little harder to see, but that, this whole area is hatched. So the plan is to essentially remove all the vegetation, re, and, you know, regrade it and reseed it.
So that was a little confusing because when, the last meeting, we said mark the trees that are coming down in, in orange. So there are blue trees, there are blue markings. Are those coming down too?
Everything that's, so we went back out, I think it was last week, and painted everything orange, per your.
Yeah, I was there Saturday. Yep. So everything that's orange is coming down?
Correct.
Is anything else coming down?
If there was, if you were looking at a two-inch tree and, along that area, that would be.
And it wasn't marked. It's coming down?
If it's, yes, so if it's what I would call vegetation, like a shrub or a vine, that would be coming down.
See, I think it's important for, I want to know what we're approving. So, so that, on, on Christian Street, what those houses will be looking at, basically that's going to be clear cut and then reseeded.
It's going to look like a big grass hill.
See, I didn't have that impression after that last meeting. Okay.
Yep, yeah, basically a big grass hill so that there's nothing growing there. So that long-term, that vegetation couldn't impact the side slope.
I understand, because when I looked at it, based on what I understood, we said anything that's going to be taken down, mark it in orange, and, which you did. So I, I really didn't, and I understand because when I looked at it, I said, well, there'll still be a lot of, to your term, vegetation versus trees.
Yeah.
Still remaining is like at some point, these, this vegetation will be mature trees.
Right.
Okay, that's important to understand that. Is, having said that, I did walk the entire perimeter and slid down the slope. It was pretty steep up there.
Yeah, it is.
A little path?
Yeah, I slid down that. Is along Christian Street, there is a, there's an area where it flattens out where people are walking. Matter of fact, somebody had a toddler in a, in a stroller. Is there a way of planting some trees on Christian Street side without potentially compromising, again, the integrity of the tank? Because it does flatten out, but I understand you want to.
Yeah, and there's a sidewalk, yes.
Yeah.
It comes down, there's a little retaining wall in a couple of spots.
Yeah, and then there's like a, there's a space to walk, you know, and I just, I, I just, because I mean, for the neighbors that are living on that side, it's just going to be a complete different transformation. And I understand, we got to pick, protect the integrity of the tanks. That's huge. But I know that's not quite the image that was, that I got from
Understood.
the initial meeting. And then going out there and looking at what was marked, that's what I thought I was seeing, what was coming down. But then I, then it started to pose a question in my mind, well, why are we leaving all of this other stuff here?
Right, right. So yeah, so yeah, the goal is essentially a big grass hill. If you zoom in on the plan, this, this one tree is actually not numbered because it's less than six inches.
Oh, yeah, I got a lot of pictures of those. Yep.
Yeah, so, so this, this gray one here, it's kind of a nice-looking tree, kind of in that flat area between the two tanks. That tree will stay. And so I suppose we could look at additional opportunities to plant trees on Christian Street.
I, if, I would want to see that. I would make that conditional, truthfully.
Sure.
And then I am concerned about the trees that are staying on the south side that they have the metal markings, one, two, and three, still on the tree.
Yeah.
And considering the mistake of, whatever you want to call it, misinformation, lack of communication, how the other trees got marked, I just wouldn't want to see them come down. Because if I went out there and I saw that metal marker in there, I, I know you sprayed these, but I found that a little, I just would make sure that there's no miscommunication, whoever's going to go out there and cut the trees. But yeah, I would be looking for plantings on, some plantings on Christian, on the Christian Street side. And I know there's room. I walked it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, absolutely. I think that's something we can look at.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Caleb, any question?
Yes, I think on Christian Street, I'm wondering what the net fencing is for. Like there's an orange, like, net fencing. Is that temporary or currently in place?
Yeah, when you go down Chrisman, it's all that.
I know it's part of the orange, yeah. Flexible fencing.
Yes.
The Parks Department puts that up. I believe it's to help catch the leaves in the fall so that they don't go into the neighbor's yards.
Oh, okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the same question, you know, when I saw it all, yeah.
A second question is, I know, noting that the hatch area will be all coming, you know, being cleared. So I just want to, I can't help but notice, you know, the steeper part, the steepest part actually, in front of the orange, of the round tank, right? That part, I noticed right now, I think there's a picture on the last page showing the existing vegetation in those area, providing some, some nice screening, not totally, but, you know, kind of make it a little hidden. Will be more, you know, in the future will be more exposed. So just wanted to make that note. A self-observation. Not, not really a problem, but I think it would, a little change in scenery. But a follow-up question, also this, I guess, just sharing with the, with the fellow members and residents if they are listening. Secondly, would there be a problem on reseeding this, this steeper part of the terrain? Or, you know, or whether there will be any, I guess, special treatment because of the steepness, given that this is steeper than, I guess, all other area?
Sure, yeah, so it is steep, so you would expect that when it rains, it's going to wash down. So essentially what we do is we'd put down geotextile to kind of control that slope and erosion. That's pretty common practice. And then once the grass takes, the erosion should be pretty much.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I think another question I have for the, for the replanting plans, I appreciate that. I think it's standard for future street hearing, for sure, to see a clear plan to the proposed replanting of the trees. And I concur with membership mentioning that, that they are all within the same neighborhood, so that is a plus. One question about that, are the tree boxes already in place? Or, I mean, I see that, you know, the rendering shows, shows them, but are they current in place? Or would they have to be newly constructed?
So in, if we're looking at the Beacon Street figure that you see on the screen, so there's no tree box there.
Okay.
And so that's essentially, you know, it's a, it's a narrow sidewalk with the grass frontage. So in that case, we would simply basically plant the tree in the grass.
Okay, and so of course, there's always uncertainty about what you find in the field. So is the 83 trees to be replanted for sure or depends on also site conditions? So if you cannot plant one, then are we minus one or you will try to put it somewhere else?
So the, yeah, the 83 trees, what, that would be the goal. And, you know, once we get in, once we, we need to evaluate essentially exact locations. So all these houses have sewer services, right? Theory would be that you wouldn't want to put a tree on top of a sewer service. You know, the roots get into the sewer, then you have issues, right? So these are sort of 83 proposed locations. We know that at a minimum, we need to put back 53, 55, based on the code. But the goal initially would be to do the 83 trees.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I have no further question. Thank you.
Okay, Caleb. Danny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. St. Seer and Woodward and Curran for coming back with a replanting tree plan. We've been told in the past that it can't be done, blah, blah, blah. It's, you know, it is what it is, but very much appreciate the fact that we're coming back with an area. I guess my question would be is, is when are these going to be replanted? What's the schedule? What are we looking at?
Sure, so.
I assume not now.
Yeah, it's not now.
Okay.
I think there's some funding things from the water utility side to kind of make sure that all of this can happen exactly as planned. But if anything, it's probably spring 25. We would take the trees down, potentially later, but spring 25 would be the earliest. And then as far as replanting goes, the actual, the goal for that is to use DCR. They have a grant program for the city. So in theory, these trees would be at essentially no cost. And yeah, so I would say as early as spring 2025 for the trees to come down. And then after that, we'd replant trees.
Appreciate the fact that you guys reduced the number of trees being cut down. You also came in with reasons as to why it threatens the infrastructure, which we didn't have the last time. You're mentioning that the roots can grow up to three or four times the size of the canopy. I agree with Mr. Frichette, Member Frichette. It would be helpful if some, something is placed on that Christian Street side, you know, so it's just not barren. And my last comment is currently we're still not listed as the Tree Board in the City of Lowell. The Conservation Commission is, and so that should be remedied. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Danny. I do appreciate the scaled out amount of trees being removed and obviously the renderings of where they've been replanted. I thought you did a good job of trying to spread them out, especially in the neighborhood. One of the trees that I, first one up I looked at, I had a question on with, tree number 28, which is on the corner of Richards and Christian, it went up in the very top corner there. I mean, it was way down the slope and way out by the street and everything else. And I was just curious, is that one that close to the water line? I mean, it appears like you had to go all the way down the slope and all the way out to the street and it was basically on the side of the street. So I didn't know.
Yeah, so if you, it's kind of hard to tell on this image.
Yeah, because you know, when you're looking at it, like it looked like it was kind of pretty far from the mains.
Might be able to tell better from this image.
You know, looking at it, it was kind of far compared to a lot of the other ones in proximity. I mean, when I first got there, I started on Beacon Street. Of course, I had no problem with the two over there, 66 and, well, the 67, then I worked my way around Richards and then to Chrisman and then down to Reservoir.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is 28 in the image shown on your screen.
I know that's.
Large tree here. So yes, I think when you're standing on the sidewalk, it doesn't look that close.
Yeah.
I do think that it's large and I think if you were to say, okay, three to five times the canopy of the tree, you probably would be at the tank there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Besides that, I have no further questions. I think most of them have been answered by the board. I like the fact that the planting schedule like you indicated.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, just for the residents. When do you anticipate the, begin the process of taking the trees down and?
Yeah, so I think we would start as early as spring 2025.
And what do you think the timeline on something like that, the complete?
Yeah, it's probably not more than two months. If that, it's not even probably that.
Okay.
To take them down and reseed.
Good, because I, when I, when the tanks went in years ago, boy, the neighbors went through an awful lot up there, an awful lot.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So Mr. We, request us the board for the shade tree removal hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the petition with the following condition, that the applicant will replace some of the trees being removed on the Christian Street side of the site. And that the applicant will be replacing the trees that are being removed in the spring of 2025 in the same schedule timeframe, spring of 2025, to also replant the trees that are being removed. So want to see that done basically in the same season is, got to capture that.
Give me a motion. I'll second the motion. Motion being second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing none, the motion carries. Good luck and thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the extra work you put into that. Thank you very much. Moving along on the agenda, next matter we have is 1733 Middlesex Street. To site plan revision, Transmanagement LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board to revise their site plan review approval at the above address. On June 17th, 24, the applicant was granted approval to expand the rear parking area. The applicant is now proposing to revise the site plan by constructing in addition to the existing building. The subject property is located in the regional retail zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the Lowell Planning Board for section 11.4.2 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Murphy, 63 Newberry Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, and I represent the petitioner, Transmanagement LLC. The majority owner member is Joe Lee. We've been here before you in the past, is that Mr. Lee owns a very successful restaurant on outer Middlesex Street, just before the Rourke Bridge, known as the China Star Restaurant. He has been very successful, unlike a lot of other restaurants, unfortunately after the pandemic. And one of the, one of the areas that he's been very successful with is small fundraisers, is that if you go into the restaurant, there's the seating for the restaurant right in front of you, but over to the left is a bar area and some seating, is that there are some people who have wanted to do fundraisers there and more and more have been wanting to do fundraisers because it's a very good size, not too large for that type of event. So what he would like to do is to continue that business. And he's asking the board to allow him to construct a 2,208 square foot expansion of the restaurant on the left side of the building. This will allow him to add additional seating and a little function area for these type of events. We, I reviewed the comments from the city, most of which were very positive. There's one that I'm sure is always an issue when it comes to expanding restaurants like this, and that's the parking issue, is he now has, thanks to you, who allowed him to expand his parking area in anticipation of this, he has 82 parking spaces. However, there was some concern for the transportation engineer with the addition of additional seats. How would you handle overflow parking? Well, the good thing is, is believe it or not, the neighbors in this area are very, very supportive of him and his business enterprise. Right next door is Walgreens, which has offered to Mr. Lee that in the evening, they don't need the parking in their lot like they do during the day. And they have offered that his customers can park in their Walgreens parking lot if they so desire. In the back of this lot is the Indian Temple, and they have 150 to 200 parking spots available in the evening. They're available most times. And they have offered to Mr. Lee that if he needs any overflow parking, then they would accommodate him behind them. In the third area, we haven't looked into it, but as reviewing this petition for this evening, is the Edward Street soccer field is right behind this restaurant. And the City of Lowell has a parking area there. And we would look into leasing spaces from the city if they were so inclined to provide additional parking to accommodate any overflow parking in the area. So I really think this is a great proposal. The parking has been addressed. And if you want to make it a condition of the grant, if you're so inclined, I would say that we could get a letter from the Indian Temple saying that they were going to provide us with this parking for the overflow. And with that said, the only other thing that I remember in my, in the notes, and I'm going to have Matt Hammer, the engineer, talk about the other issues, is that they were talking about the dumpster. This was a real issue the last time we were here. And quite honestly, my associate went to the area and it was disgusting, the dumpster area.
Yeah, I think Jerry had some pictures last year.
He did.
Tom's life still have the photo.
You do, yeah. And I went up afterwards and it was cleaned out. And I don't think it's the size, Mr. Frichette, of the dumpster. I think it's the how many times you clean it. It has to be cleaned. And that's something that I have impressed upon my client, is that we don't, we don't really concern about the size of it, is that you've got to get it cleaned all the time. And that's a very big issue that we're going to address in the future. So I would now like to turn it over to Matt Hammer, who is our engineer, so he can address some of the technical issues relative to this proposed expansion.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So it's, hasn't been that long since we've seen this plan. We're currently constructing the drainage improvements in the rear, as well as the additional parking that was previously approved. And that's shown as this cross hatching area. If anyone's been over there in the last week, you can see this construction occurring. And it's nice, it's not interrupting the existing restaurant as it stands today. The addition is located here, 23 feet by the full length, which is 96 feet. And that'll extend off the end of the building to 2.6 feet off the right of way, which would be located here. And some existing trees will have to be removed and some just ornamental bushes will have to be removed. And those will be relocated and dispersed around the property. We're also able to put some of the trees back here if need be, as part of the landscape plan that we provided with the project. This is a floor plan and an elevation that was provided. So this is looking at the restaurant from Middlesex Street. So what is in white is the existing, and then this is the proposed expansion up this side, maintaining similar design elements of the existing restaurant. This is the, the back of the restaurant, similar architectural elements to blend into the existing building itself. This is the side of the restaurant. Then this is the side that you would see off of Edward Street. And you'll see an array of window, windows here, as well as a masonry facade, covering up any concrete that's extending above the grade from the installation of the frost wall for the addition. This is a floor plan, showing the existing floor plan as it sits today. And then this here is the expansion of that floor plan. And I can take any questions or turn it over to Attorney Murphy.
The other issue that was addressed in the city comments was the stormwater runoff from the roof, since it was so close to the adjoining area. And we certainly would make it a condition that the engineer work with the stormwater management team to ensure that any stormwater runoff is addressed properly. But other than that, those are the issues that the city brought up and will certainly address them as part of any approval, if you're so inclined.
I know when we were here last time, the, we discussed about the weeping willow tree in the back, and that was going to go before by tree wood. So I see it's here on the plan, so that's staying going, I mean.
They're not, they're not going to take it down.
Okay. I know that was a question that was.
It actually looks.
Hanging since our last meeting.
It actually looks pretty good.
Did they trim it? It's well trimmed, right?
It's not as bad as it was.
It's staying.
Okay. Yeah, I just saw it on the plan, I'm like.
Big tree night here.
Yeah, I know they grow pretty quick, those things. And they do run towards water.
But it looks very good.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. If you have nothing further, I'll open up to the public and we'll get back to you for any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to the public. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor, hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll open up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Matt, I was just, where's Matt? If I could, so I was having some difficulty figuring out the square footage of the building because I just, are you going before the ZBA for a variance on the parking?
No, we don't need it.
Well, see, that's what I'm, so help me with this, maybe I'm, maybe I'm.
We received a special permit previously from the planning board to expand the restaurant when it was first built. And that gave us the requisite parking, reduce parking. And according to the city, we don't need a special permit, we already have it. And the only thing we need is the site plan revision.
But you're increasing the capacity. So it was approved at the time based on that application. I'm just.
When I first, it's an excellent question. Because when I first submitted the plan, and maybe Mr. Rickett can help us out with this, when I first submitted the plan, I was, I submitted an amendment to the special permit to provide for the expansion of the restaurant without the required parking. But we were informed, we only needed the site plan revision, not any special permit relative to parking.
I'd have to look into that. Typically, when you're constructing in addition to the property, you'd have to meet the increased parking requirement for it, the addition. you'd have to meet the increased parking requirement for it, the addition, which would typically be a variance. I know there are some special permits that allow for reduced parking. Off the top of my head, I don't know exactly the amount of reduced parking they would allow for, so I'm not sure if that would have been the pathway forward, but I have to look into it and get back to you.
Yeah, I, anything we do, I think would be subject to that needing to be, I, I don't think we, well, I think it's required, but.
I'm just saying, that my original application was looking to, for two things, site plan review and an amendment of the special permit. But I was informed that the only thing we need is the site plan revision, not the, not anything relative to parking.
So Matt, if we could just go through that exercise, because I'd like to figure out what the square footage of the building. I have two calculations, I'm just trying to figure out, based on the site plan. I don't know if it's 64 feet wide, if it's 64 feet plus 23 feet, or. I'm just having a hard time figuring that out, so. Just need to know the length and the width of the final.
So the math on the building is 23 times 96, which is the addition?
That's the new addition.
Yep.
Right, that's you get the 2,000, but total.
That gives you, that gives you 2,208.
Got that. What's the existing?
The existing is 6,153.
So then the 2,008, and then divide that by 50 on page 45.
Yeah, well, it's divided by 250 is the requirement for the parking.
So if you could just point that to me, because like I say, I may be looking at this in the wrong way. I'm looking at page 45, under parking for restaurant. And it says UMU, TMU, NB, Institution, one space per 100 square feet. All other permitted users, one space per 500 square feet. So where are you pointing to? I guess that's what I'm just, and I may be reading that wrong. I just want clarification, if we're going to be voting on this.
So it's section 6.1.5, subsection 5.
Okay, fair enough, let me look.
And that section states parking requirements for restaurant and takeout restaurants may be reduced to one space per 250 square feet by special, hold on.
Yep.
By a special permit to be issued by the ZBA.
Right, not to be issued by us.
It's the zoning board of appeals. And that's in the parking chart. The parking chart is right here. The applicable section is stipulated in the chart itself. And then the calculation associated with the square footage is provided, where 70 spaces is existing. The prior permitting that we did had the addition of 12 spaces, which is the cycle that we just went through prior to. That gives us a total of 82 spaces. But if you run the calculation on one space per 250 square feet with the existing footprint and the proposed footprint, that would give you a net required spaces of 34.
See, Matt, I'm, so I'm confused, because if I go to that section, right, parking requirements for restaurants and takeout restaurants may be reduced to one space per 500 square feet. In the UMU and all other, okay, and T and S, in one space for 200 feet for all other permitted uses by a special.
We're in a regional retail district.
Regional retail district, okay, that's what I, that's why I want to make sure I was reading it correctly.
Okay.
All right.
That's good, I need to be.
No, no, that's, that's why I'm asking. And I was open to being wrong on that, but I just wanted to make.
So I would like to say that we've walked through this, the prior permits.
Right.
The last sequence of permits that we just went through with the zoning board of appeals and the planning board.
As long as you're comfortable not having to go back to the ZBA on that, okay.
We went through, right.
For that special.
Yeah, if it's, if it's required, we're going to go and get it.
All right, no, no, I just.
But that's the way that the requirement.
I just don't want to approve it, and then people saying why?
I appreciate that, but all I can tell you is that we, my original petition included an amendment of the special permit to reduce the parking requirements. Because the city said that you now become the special permit granting authority relative to the parking. But we didn't need to do that, because we were just expanding the restaurant within the dimensional requirements that were allowed under the zoning. Therefore, we only needed a revision of the site plan review.
Fair enough, no, good.
If I may, I think on page two of the staff comment from PETA, at the very top of the page, I think this is what we're talking about now, with, "Staff determine that this is a site plan revision because it does not make dimensional or layout changes to the approved parking area, or affect the flow of the traffic through the parking."
Right.
So that's where, those are the comments you've received that now we've received.
Right, exactly.
Because I remember reading this, I'm saying, "Staff determine," so, okay.
I was waiting to get clarification. I didn't actually get a call back when I called on this, so. But yeah, no, I just, I had concern over that, because I didn't want to approve it if in fact it wasn't.
Let me, I had concerns over it.
Yeah.
It was a great question, because I called several times to Mr. Katribus to say, "Really, is this the way to go? Because we want to make sure we get all of the approvals that we need." They said, "No, you just need the site plan revision, and that will take care of the project."
Yeah, no, I'm fine with the petition as it is. That was my biggest concern, because obviously, I mean, there'll be a greater demand. I mean, I know people that go to the restaurant, they love it. I'm just going to come back to the dumpster, correct? I think that that's, you know, I would expect the city to be monitoring that, because I think even for the owner, if you've got all your parking in the rear and your customers are coming to your establishment, for that to look the way it did the first time around. I went there this weekend, it looked fine, you know, so it was, I just.
My associate went out there, because he was here instead of me the last time.
He was, he took, he took the brunt of that one.
He did, but he went. He was better than me, because he actually went and did a site visit.
That's like you at the Celtics game.
Yes, I was. And.
That was the final game, yeah, that's right.
It was, it was the final game.
Well, at least that winning game, right?
And he said that it was disgusting.
No.
And so I have talked to my clients, saying, "You don't need a bigger dumpster, you just need it to be cleaned out all the time."
That's what you need, yeah.
So that's what we're doing.
All right, no, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just needed a clarification on that. Yep.
Caleb?
So following up with Member Frichette on the dumpster, so you, so I'm hearing you can control your frequency, so even though with the expansion, maybe a question of Matt, you're not planning for a bigger dumpster or area or.
No, just more cleaning out.
Okay.
More, you know, that's what really, you can have the biggest dumpster in the world, and if you don't clean it out, it's no good. So we're going to make sure that it's cleaned out on a regular basis. Right now, it's, I think it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. But, three times a week. But if we need to do it more, then we'll do it.
Yeah, because when I visited recently, they're still of some problem. I think, I think the staff have done a good job keeping them tidier, but it's still overflowing, so you have bags outside, so. So I do have some concern even with, you know, now that with expansion, like, perhaps, I hope to see that happening soon, so that's just my comment. But I concur with you, if with the proper time, timing on recycle or pickup, you can handle that.
We're going to do that.
Okay. And our question is like, with the setback, so I noticed that, like, Ever Street is a public street, so I suppose that is a front setback as well, instead of a side setback? Is that correct, Matt? Otherwise, you would need a variance, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're, we're now down to 2 and 1/2 feet in front of Ever Street, okay. So I do have some concern now that you're going to take away space for existing onsite trees and the ornamental plantings, but you only have 2 and 1/2 feet to work with. So the good thing is, I was worried about that's going to be a blank wall, but you showed us the floor plan, so at least there will be windows, so that's good. But I'm wondering whether there could be more, like, plantings to be done on that side. I might have to work with the city on that one, but I don't know how the arrangement will do, but do you have any ideas or other board members, my other thoughts about that?
So the line of ornamental plantings that were existing along the building, we could put those against the building, in that strip? And then we're going to be leaving those two trees that are there today.
Okay.
Yep.
So you can work with 2 and 1/2 feet?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Would there be any possibility of working with the city to maybe add more trees? I know you have windows, so, but if there's a gap between the windows, might that be a possibility?
Joe, we'd be happy to work with the city to come up with a plan for landscaping in ornamental trees. We have no problem with that. Because one of the comments that the city had was about planting in the parking areas to avoid excessive heat, so we can work with them on that issue also.
Okay. Appreciate that. Well, that would be a little different than Ever Street, so this is more like for screening, but maybe we'll lump it together with, if that is a condition, we'll lump it together into one with tree plantings. Now, to the parking, I'm happy to hear about positive neighbors offering to help, so. Just going to the transportation comments. So, let's see. So increase in this number of seating by 100 seats, including 60 seats in new event space. So, so that the engineer is wondering, 82 is enough. I think it would be helpful if there's certain lease, or at least understanding on paper that there will be overflow parking that could be provided. I think you might have to work with the engineer to figure out actually how many overflow parking, because I mean, it would be a burden to you guys too, if we, unlimited amount.
It's difficult to get like a Walgreens to say they're going to absolutely commit so many spaces.
I see.
Or the Indian Temple to say, "We're going to commit so many spaces." That's the most difficult thing. I certainly think we can get a letter from the Indian Temple that they're going to, yeah. He says that we can get a letter from the Indian Temple, but, you know, most of the functions are going to be in the evening or the weekend. And that's when Walgreens parking lot is not as full as it is during the day. And also, that's when the Indian Temp, that's when the Indian Temple is not.
I see.
Not celebrating, so there's sufficient parking there.
On the Indian Temple side, I mean, I'm looking at cell image or aerial images. It is a longer walk to Walgreens and even the soccer field parking. So I think if I could choose, looking at geography, people might feel more comfortable parking right next door instead of like walking two properties down. But like, I suppose with a big enough crowd and then like an event, you can probably give directions, so that's not a problem, so.
Or we, we bus in all of our employees.
Uh huh.
So they're not taking up spaces. So we caught, if there was a function going on, we could probably bus the people from the Indian Temple over to the restaurant, so that it's less of a walk for them, especially in the wintertime.
Okay.
They have their own vans that bring up the employees.
Okay. Okay, I think, I think, I think that's quite positive. I mean, it's a short walk, I mean, it shouldn't be a problem.
Parking is always an issue.
Okay.
Good thing is, he's successful and needs the parking, so.
Yes. And one last thing on the Walgreens, so you're saying you can't re-put in writing, but it's not like they're going to tell people at night if there are some customers next door?
No, they're not, you know, it's all, you know, it's, it's a, it's a good relationship between Walgreens and Mr. Lee. I don't think they're going to commit to a certain number of spaces or that they're dedicated to his employees. But they've already said, and his customers are using Walgreens parking lot.
Okay. Okay.
And we'll attempt to get a letter. I was hoping to have one tonight, I don't have it, but we would get a letter, if you want to make that part of the condition, that we would get a letter from the Indian Temple, that they would provide parking for us.
Well, thank you on that note. And one last thing, I just want to comment, I was looking at the front of the restaurant, and I was wondering, well, this is going to be asymmetrical, like, you'll, you know, with the expansion, but apparently, so just want to get confirmed that you are moving the entrance to the center, so that they become symmetrical again, right? Oh, yes. It's the look that counts, right?
Entrance is not moving.
Oh, it's not moving, okay.
It's just such that with the addition, it looks as though it's centered. Whether it's exactly centered.
Whether it's exactly centered, I can't answer that question.
Sure.
But it just looks as though it's centered, but I believe it's, it's.
Really?
There's a little bit more here than there is here.
But I'm looking at the, the right side is existing, right?
Correct.
The right side of your, or your plan? That's the floor plan.
The easiest way to look at this is that what's in white and not shaded is what's existing.
I feel like it's shifted.
And then this is the addition. It just so happens that it looks centered.
Okay.
I do not have the exact dimension.
But it will kind of look centered.
It'll kind of look centered if you're standing exactly in the middle of the building, out at Middlesex Street, but if you're moving, it's not going to look centered.
Sure. I take your answer, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Caleb. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I looked at this, my biggest issue was is parking. We're increasing 100 fannies and seats compared to 200. So we're going to have potentially 300 people sitting in this restaurant. I looked at the regulations that Jerry had talked about. I disagree with Mr. Hammer. I don't think this is a takeout restaurant. I would classify this as a eat-in restaurant, given we're adding 100 more seats. I do like the possibility of using the neighbors and helping, helping out this restaurant. But my, my gut says that a letter, a non-binding letter, might not be particularly helpful. Based on my calculations, we'd need about 160 spaces based on the, based on the upgraded proposal. We have half that. So I would want to see, I would want to see some sort of lease with the neighbors. I'd want to see something that's going to take some of this, basically the brunt of this, away from the neighborhood and onto these other properties that you've mentioned. You've mentioned Walgreens, the Indian Temple, and potentially the city soccer area. That's what I would want to see, just because you've got 100, 100 new seats in this restaurant. Love the fact that you're doing well, Mr. Lee, that's important. But I also think that it needs to be, we need to get some parking. We need to have a more of a commitment than just a letter. That's my two cents, Mr. Chairman.
I could just, you know, it's, it's an excellent point, but you as a lawyer and know that it's very difficult to get somebody to commit to lease certain parking spaces for their own parking lot. This came up when Mr. Lee was here before, is. This came up when Mr. Lee was here before, is we're, we're doing a housing development on 31 Westford Street. And part of the parking is going to be resolved by having parking in the Gallagher Terminal Garage. They would not commit to assigning certain spaces to our housing development. They said that they have sufficient spaces available, but they will not lease any spaces. They just said, we're going to be able to, to park there. I think that it's the same with this, is Walgreens is not going to lease us spaces. And the Indian Temple is not going to lease us spaces. I think the city of Lowell might, I've done it in the past, but I can't guarantee that they're going to lease spaces. But, you know, any of the functions are going to happen at nighttime when the parking is not, you know, critical for Walgreens or the Indian Temple. And I think that we can rely on their good faith that they're going to allow us to park there. I think it's an excellent opportunity to expand an existing business in the city of Lowell. And I just ask you that to consider that we'll be able to provide the parking for the increased volume that's going to happen there. Anything further, Dan?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can I just come on, because I agree with Tony Tanzar regarding the definition of takeout and the application of that, because it's, we looked at a, at a Taco Bell on Rogers Street, and that was clearly a drive-through takeout. Any restaurant in the city, you can go out and get takeout. I mean, you can, you can order a meal and takeout. And that's, at the end of the day, this is a full-fledged restaurant, the idea is.
No, this is a, this is a dine-in restaurant.
No, understood, no.
This is a dine-in restaurant, but I think we can handle the parking.
I mean, clearly, the, the transportation engineer had, had some, some concerns with that. You know, in Edward Street, I have to think of, there's a Saturday afternoon function and there's a soccer going on. That, there's, there's not enough parking to handle the demand for the soccer league.
Oh, I agree with, I agree with it, that's why I'm saying most of the functions are at nighttime. And the functions we're talking about are functions that I've been to, they're like on, you know, a Thursday evening at like six to nine or something like that. And not during the day.
Like, I just have a couple of questions on.
So how often then they have functions? I mean, is it a weekly basis, once a month, once every couple of months?
It's mostly been political functions lately, as they have had political fundraisers.
As we know, it's seasonal.
Yeah, I've been there.
September, November.
I'm free, but mostly because it's a nice small area, you can't get a big hall anymore
Right.
for political functions, so they have it in this area, and that's what he's really keying in on for those type of functions, and those are at nighttime.
I think they held one after the November election there, didn't they?
Yeah. So those are the.
I think two of the people running were there that night.
And then I got an invitation for another one coming up in December, so it's that type of function. It's a, you're talking about 35 to 50 people going to the function?
So obviously, any type of letter from Walmart and the temple would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. And I noticed when I've been there in the past that they do bring in a lot of the employees by the vans, and they park all the vans in the, in the back. So as a suggestion, if you had a big, a big group for meeting, is to put the employee parking in the vans at one of the Walgreens or the temple and take them completely off-site.
Yeah.
And that would add up, because when I looked at before, there was a lot of vans back there, a lot of employee parking. So if you're going to do anything, move the employee parking over there, which adds up more parking for the individuals who come in for that short period of time.
It's a good idea. They have like 10 people in a van.
Yeah, yeah, and I noticed they have a few vans back there.
Yeah.
And obviously, the vans take up more room than a lot of small, subcompact cars, if you're trying to get more cars in there for a function.
So next.
If you had, you know, the letters from Walgreen, the Indian Temple, I try to put the the employee parking off-site. And I mean, for the dumpster issue, obviously, that's something that you'd, you'd want to have more frequently, especially when you have one of these large group appearances. I mean, that's going to fill it up a lot faster than the regular evening traffic. So you'd want to try to concentrate on having that dumpster picked up after any type of large group. And obviously, as you indicated, to work with the stormwater, they had a question there with being within three feet from the line.
Yeah, they had a question about the water running off the roof.
Yeah, you can talk with them.
We'll work with them.
And I think there was falling up what Caleb said, you know, if you had some of the plantings on Edward Street, and I think staff indicated that they'd be willing to work with you to add some of the trees in the parking islands
Yep.
in the back, I think which is something they've been really pushing for, and with the heat island effect, to put some of them back there. And I know usually you're willing to work with staff on that. I mean, if it was necessary to get a letter from the city of Lowell, because I know some, some of the functions, like, this time here, they're not playing soccer at 4:30 at night. In the spring, they are, when it's 7:30, with daylight savings time. So that could be a little.
Place is mobbed.
Yeah, I mean, you know, now, I mean, in the fall, it's earlier, they're not out there practicing as much. So I mean, and that would be further commitment to walk to than the Indian Temple, which is the closest, which obviously you like to have.
I think the vans could bring the people from the Indian Temple.
Yeah, that can work as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, will there be any comments I have at this time? Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, from a practical matter, in, in, if you want a successful business, I, I, there's no guarantee the functions will always be during the day if somebody wants to have, I mean, at night, somebody wants to have a shower there. If somebody, I mean, it's, once it's approved, it's approved. If we made a conditional that the function would only be in the evening, knowing there would be parking available, and I suspect the applicant would not be agreeable to that. So I, I don't, I don't want to create this sense that, oh, we've resolved this, it's, it's it's going, it's a challenge, it's a challenge if there's going to be a full-fledged function and the restaurant is, is, is full. And I don't think, you know, I don't think we've fully addressed it.
So I know, I know last we talked about parking quite a lot is when with the Moana dispensaries. And usually we deal, have a revisit by, by, by the city staff to assess the parking situation after a certain period of time. I'm wondering if that could, you know, could provide a way to to check against whether we, you know, the current arrangement will work, or they have to get a little bit more, I guess, either come back here or they'll get, like, work out whatever concerns that the transportation engineer might still have then.
Because I think the analogy of residential development, where we, we're basically saying you're attracting people who aren't going to be vehicle-centric people, right? But if you're driving out, if you're going to this restaurant in Middlesex Street, you're driving there with your car. It's a completely different scenario, so. And so I just, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it just strikes me as, is we're trying to work with this business owner. I would agree with you, we want to work with this business owner. But I think we need some sort of firm commitment on extra parking, because otherwise, it's just going to be a mess. The only times I've been down in that area, every time that I've gone to visit it, the parking lot is jammed, which I'm excited about because the business is doing well. But I think we also need to be realistic. If we can't get a lease, any sort of lease agreement that will give us additional parking, then I look at it like we don't have any additional parking. I just, that's the way I have to look at it. So to me, I think one of the things that we should have as a condition is, is to get additional parking. Do I think they're going to be able to get 80 spaces? No. Do I think they're going to be able to get 60? No. Do I think they're going to get 40? Maybe. But I, I think it's one of those situations where, you know, like you've described, is we're looking at a situation where we should have 160 spaces and we're not going to. We got 80, all right, that's good, that's a good start. So I, I still think we need some sort of lease, which indicates we're going to have additional parking in order for us to approve this revised site plan.
Counsel, what do you think you could get from the temple?
You know, I, they told us they were going to give us a letter that we were allowed to use parking spaces there in the evening. We haven't had any indication beyond a letter saying that we'd be, be able to use spaces. And we have a verbal agreement with Walgreens that we're going to be able to use spaces in Walgreens. I think it's, I don't know, it's difficult to get at least spaces. What I'm just saying is that I would certainly make it a condition that we get get a letter from the temple that we can use their, their parking lot for overflow spaces during a function, whatever time of day it is. It's just hard to get a lease for dedicated spaces. I tried to do it with the Regional Transit Authority. You know, they give us a letter saying we have plenty of spaces, and, but it's still first come, first served. We fully expect that you're going to be able to be accommodated, but we will not set aside any spaces, any dedicated spaces for you. It's just difficult to get.
Isn't?
Just look at the view of the temple parking lot.
It's a big one.
That's what Caleb and I are looking at.
When they have their festivals, it is packed.
Yeah.
They can barely handle the
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And the businesses do quite well, let it surround the area as a result of that.
Yes, exactly.
We're going to take theirs too.
Although they don't eat dim sum. It is a large area.
This is their lot.
I think Walgreens is the best one, because it's right next door to us. And people can just walk right over to the restaurant from it. But they're not going to give us leased spaces.
So.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, without a, from a practical sense, without somebody saying you can park there, the way I am, I would not pull in the Walgreens to just park over there to go to the restaurant.
Well, I think what we'd do at a function, we would tell them to park in Walgreens parking.
So it'd be for the function.
Yeah.
Now, is that, that new space, though, is that also going to be restaurant space as well? I'm assuming.
Yeah, I mean, they'll be, they'll be serving.
So in theory, if you have a good night, I mean, the idea is you could fill the building.
But I think the, I think the restaurant part is big enough for just dine-in.
No.
This is more designed for those type of functions that I talked about earlier, like a political function, that you need like 35 to 50 people at. That's what this expansion is designed for.
Matt, do you have a total of how many tables that, that will have in the new plan?
So there's six tables here. 14 tables that seat four. Seven tables that seat two.
Okay.
So tables two. 20, 30, I'm looking at existing two, so 32, 30. I think it'll be up to 60 tables on the restaurant.
Well, thanks, Matt. So I, I think maybe a question is whether we're concerned mainly for the functions or also, you know.
There's no guarantee it's functions.
Yes.
Let's be, talk realistic terms here.
I don't think they're going to be very large functions. It's not going to be like a wedding.
No, just understood it's that it's, it's restaurant space, so it's not, you know, we keep focusing on functions, but, I mean, it could be.
Yep, no, I agree with you. I'm just saying is that this, this expansion was designed for those type of functions, because they were getting much more popular there.
Sure.
And it could be separated from the dining area. That's, that's the purpose of the expansion. I don't think it's going to be, like I said, like a wedding crowd or something like that.
It says you're on, right on the main drag, so it's not like cars can park out on Middlesex Street.
I said that, and you'd notice in our application, I have no on-street parking, because you're not going to park on Middlesex.
And Edward Street is, is narrow, and you need to keep that, that's, you know, if you had that available, that would be.
And we don't. I agree with you 100%, but I didn't include that in the application, because it's just not real.
Understood.
But I think the Walgreens parking is real, and I think the, the Indian Temple is real. It's just I can only get so much from them.
Would it be helpful if he, if you could see what type of letters you could get and then come back and show them to us? Would that be?
If, if that's what the board.
You know, I think that's what the hang-up is, let's face it.
Oh, I know what the hang-up is.
I think everything else has been satisfied, but we've been spinning our wheels here on parking.
I will tell you, I will do whatever I can to get some. I will tell you, I will do whatever I can to get some type of commitment from them. I'm just saying is that.
Well, I get it.
I've done it in the past.
Yep. I know you're not going to get, you know, X number spots, but if you can get, we will allow overflow parking at two locations, three locations.
Pardon me?
I mean, if you can get a letter, you know, from either, as you said.
Walgreens or the Indian temple.
Yeah. I mean, you said even you'd look into the City Lowell, or whatever else you could look into. Any other thoughts come up?
Yep.
You know, I mean, because, you know, that would give us something to hang a hat on, I think.
Absolutely. I understand your position.
I mean, I think that's, you know, what we're spinning our wheel. I think all the other comments, you know, you talked about the trees, talked about, you know, doing the dumpster, doing the stormwater, I think everything else, you know, minimal to any condition that we set for.
Yep.
And, you know, so.
I will do my best to get as best a commitment as I can from the surrounding businesses.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, and then you could explore any other avenues, if you think of something else, whatever. I mean, obviously, I'm just looking, I think, our next meeting is December 2nd. I think we got three things on, right, Dylan?
That's correct.
If it was just to come back for the letters with the parking, I'd have no objection to putting on for that night, if there'd be enough time for you, Counselor.
December 2nd?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that acceptable? Board members think that'd be?
We're either going to get.
At least help.
We're either going to get it, or we're not going to get it. So, that would be, that would be fine.
Yeah. And I know you tried to get it ahead of time, and I know you've been working on that, so hopefully, things are in motion a little bit, so.
Even a letter of intent.
Yeah.
I mean, it's better than just a letter. A letter of intent that, yeah, we intend to lease or so many spaces. We just need something firmer than, you know, I get what you're saying, you've worked with these people in the past, these neighbors in the past, but we need something.
Yeah. And, like I said, not to be repetitive, but he's doing a housing development at 31 Westford Street, and we tried to get dedicated spaces from the Regional Transit Authority, but they would only give us a letter saying.
In the old days, they used to give us the letters saying we will assign 25 spots, and then they changed the language on it.
Yeah.
Over the years, we've seen that language change, saying there is enough for extra 25.
They say there's plenty of spaces, but it's still first come, first served.
Yeah. They've changed the language over the years, because years ago, we used to get that commitment letter saying so.
And I don't think we're looking for assigned spaces. We're just looking for spaces.
Spaces that are available, yeah. No, I understand. So, December 2nd, '24, and hopefully I have some, I'll provide them to you beforehand, if we have them.
Oh, yeah, I've had the letters. Yeah. We'll have them before that night, whatever you have, pass it out to staff, and they send the email right out to us. So, I'll make a motion that we continue the matter to our next meeting for December 2nd.
Motion made.
Motion made. Second, hold on a second. Say aye.
Aye.
Good luck. Hopefully, we can move forward that night. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. We have 681-701 Merrimack Street, 722-734 Merrimack Street, 53 and 60 Salem Street, 18-32 Decatur Street for a site plan review. The Lowell Housing Authority has applied to the Lowell Planning Board, seeking site plan review approval to construct two new buildings totaling 118 residential units. Building one will contain 90 units located at 722-734 Merrimack Street, 53 and 63 Salem Street, 18-32 Decatur Street. Building two will contain 28 units located at 681-701 Merrimack Street. The subject properties are located in the urban mixed-use zoning district in the multifamily mid-rise overlay district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the Lowell Planning Board for the development with greater than three residential units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's William Martin, attorney with offices at 491 Dutton Street in Lowell. I represent Trinity Financial, which is the applicant and proposed developer of this project. It is to be located on land owned by the Lowell Housing Authority and its affiliated group Renew, revitalization effort toward New Urbanism, Inc. Here from the Housing Authority is Tar Chan, the executive director, and Marc Briere, the deputy executive director. The Housing Authority had a competitive process, seeking developers for these two sites, and Trinity was proud to emerge from that process as the designated developer and brings this plan before you tonight. As you indicated, there are 118 units in two separate buildings. I think, to orient the board a little bit, at the corner of Merrimack and Decatur Street, which is a small, narrow street adjacent to the Housing Authority property that currently is the Mercier Center, that is the larger building. We propose 90 units there. The other location is across the street at the corner of Merrimack and Cabot Street, which would have a separate building of 28 units. The project complies with zoning requirements. This is in the area that no parking is required, although there are 25 parking spaces located on the first floor of the Decatur Street site. This is low and moderate income development for people of low and moderate income, of various income levels, and it aligns nicely with the city's goal of adding more affordable housing in the city. There is a staff memo, as you've seen, that calls for a few conditions, all of which would be acceptable to the applicant. So, in addition to the parties I introduced from the Housing Authority, we have members of the development team here, from Trinity Financial, Michael Lozano, James Keefe, and Chris Stanley. You'll hear from Mr. Lozano in a minute. The architects are Glenn Daly and Matt Marata, and I believe Kendra Helloel may be in cyberspace available if we have architectural questions. The project engineers are Lang and Engineering, and Hillary Holmes from that group is here, as well as Ian Ramey from the landscape architecture firm of Copley Wolf. So, we're excited about this project. We think it fits well with the city's goals of adding more housing. It also fits well with the city's goals of redeveloping the upper Merrimack Street corridor. We think it'll be an asset to the neighborhood. We think the design fits well. And so, I'd like to recognize Michael Lozano from Trinity, just has a few slides to show you a little bit more about the specifics of the project. And then, if you have questions, we have various members of the design team, as I mentioned, to answer whatever questions you might have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Martin. Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. Again, my name is Michael Lozano, representing Trinity Financial. We are based in Boston at 75 Federal Street. We are very, very happy to be here, and this is an incredible milestone for this project. We're very happy to be partnering with the Lowell Housing Authority to bring forth these 118 mixed-income affordable housing units at the sites that Attorney Martin referenced. We'll just very quickly go through this presentation, give you a little bit of an overview of the project, discuss some of the design intent, and then, as Attorney Martin indicated, we've got essentially our whole design team here to answer any questions that you might have. So, again, this is an image of the acre neighborhood. The sites are located, again, at Merrimack Street and Decatur, as well as Merrimack and Cabot Street. The 118 units are contained within two buildings. The larger building is 90 units in a six-story building at Decatur Street, and we call it the Decatur Building. The smaller building is 28 units in a four-story building at Cabot, the Cabot Building. So, again, these are mixed-income affordable housing units, up to 80% of AMI. To give you a sense of that, 80% of AMI in the city of Lowell is $142,000 for a family of four. So, while that, you know, this housing that we're proposing here is really housing for everybody, housing for working families, from those of very modest means to those who are at, you know, approaching the middle income scale, to the point where they can perhaps move on to afford on the market. But again, we're filling a need, a desperate need for affordable housing, again, for those, you know, earning perhaps under 30% of AMI, some earning up to 50% of AMI, which is, again, a family that's earning approximately $71,000, and all the way up to $142,000. The buildings that we're proposing here are healthy, energy-efficient, resilient, and accessible for families. When we talk about energy-efficient, we're talking about extremely energy-efficient. We're proposing that these buildings will be Passive House certified, that they will be all-electric, there won't be any gas hookups here. They will be extremely high-performing and very, very low energy usage, which has plenty of benefits, most importantly, for the families who will live there, because their costs to heat and cool their units will be very, very low. We're going to provide landscaped open spaces that feature amenities for the residents, as well as the larger community. These buildings just aren't for the residents. We're taking this as an opportunity to completely rebuild the streetscapes around these, and we'll get into a little bit more details about that. We're going to improve stormwater runoff. Again, we're going to improve all of the infrastructure and utilities around these sites, and we'll get into that a little bit more. And we're going to reinforce connections to the neighborhood and improve circulation for vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. So, these are just a little bit more details about what we talked about, the configuration of the buildings, the type of housing that we're providing here. The units are typically one-to-three-bedroom units, so again, they fit families or households at a variety of circumstances. And these are just some of the details that we can get into, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. As Attorney Martin mentioned, this project is completely compliant as it relates to zoning, thanks to the overlay district that was recently enacted in the city, and we're very happy about that. Again, these are just some images of the sites, both the site at Decatur Street as well as Cabot, some of the surrounding context. And this is an image of the site as it exists today at Decatur Street. The other site, the smaller site at Cabot, is very, very similar to this. These sites have been long vacant. At one point, they were vibrant. They had very functioning uses, buildings typical to Lowell, but they haven't for a very, very long time. They have long been vacant, and this is really an opportunity to provide new housing and provide some new life to these corners off of Merrimack Street. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Matt Marata, our architect.
Thanks, Mike. For the record, Matt Marata, Icon Architecture, 101 Summer Street, Boston. So, as Mike started to discuss, you know, we are really interested and really are pushing hard and forward on infilling these open spaces currently today, reinforcing connections across Merrimack Street, reinstating the urban street wall, knitting back together the fabric of the community. Along with those connections along the major axes of Merrimack and Salem Street, we're also reinforcing the Decatur Street, which today, as it stands, is a kind of a little dirty alley that's not, you know, too pretty to look at. We're going to be putting new trees, new parallel parking spaces along there, and reinforcing eyes on the streets to make this a public, safe area. And that connection along Decatur Street is really important to us, too, because we feel like it has a strong axial connection from the North Common Village all the way up to the church, which has a strong emphasis and element, which is why we concentrated our entry in our tallest part of the building at that corner of Merrimack and Decatur as well. And of course, the Cabot Street building, a four-story building, completing the intersection at the corner, enforcing a corner, a public urban corner with some ground-floor activity and streetscape as well. The third thing that we're really enforcing here in the site plan, as you can see outlined in the dashed green line, is this public access through a landscaped area. With our neighbors being the community center, we do feel like it's important to acknowledge that and to continue the ability to have residents and community members to be able to walk between the two blocks in an open and public way. There's also some accessibility entrances to the community center along that backside, which we'll be maintaining and providing access to. A little bit zoomed in here, landscape plan, and if you have specific questions, our landscape architect is here as well to answer it, as we mentioned. But we are providing new infrastructure along the streets, new street trees, lighting, curbing, and sidewalks. There's also some existing trees on site that we're proposing to maintain that are mature and healthy. And to give you some examples, real-life examples, that Trinity, Icon, and Copley Wolf have done in the past, that we are here representing what this space could look like, with connections, green walkways, urban courtyards that also have public-facing sides, and lots of interesting and varied textures with the planting, that are all native and drought-tolerant. Not all native, but majority native and drought-tolerant. Moving into the site itself, we are proposing a few garage spaces under our building, and that's accessed off of Decatur Street. The Salem Street side is not accessible to the garage, it's blocked off, so all vehicular traffic will go down Decatur. Our main residential entry is at the corner of Merrimack and Decatur Street, and we have, continuing down Merrimack, a series of amenity spaces that will help activate the streetscape in front, with lots of glazing, amenities such as a clubroom, potential cowork, fitness, things of that nature. Package and trash is all located off of Decatur, so any functions of that will be pulled out as necessary, so there won't be any dumpsters outside. Everything's housed internally to the building until it needs to come out. And you can see here, a little bit closer up view of our smaller courtyard space in the knuckle of the building, along with the pedestrian path that connects between Salem and Merrimack Street. Moving over to... Moving over to the Cabot Street Building, it's a much smaller building, no parking allocated here. While the other building has mainly public uses and parking at the ground floor, this has a mixture, just due to the size and scale of the building. We do have a community multipurpose room at the corner, which we felt like was appropriate. It's the most visible and well-seen space in the building and at the corner of the intersection. There's some residential units towards the backside, and the rest of the front is a mixture of bike, mechanical, and lobby space. Moving into the buildings, it's a, as Mike said, it's a mixture of ones, twos, and threes. But below, here in the images, are showing you past projects that Trinity and Icon have done, showing the level of finish that will be provided in these units. While we do say they are workforce and affordable units, there's no distinction between these and market-rate product at the end of the day. An image, perspective, looking at the corner at Decatur Street here, this is where we propose to have our main residential entry. As you can see, we've improved the infrastructure down Decatur Street itself with the parallel parking, street trees. And we look to have a variety of textures on the building at all times, and help, and also, massing is really important to us. So, we don't want to just come in and plop down a gigantic building that has no association to its surrounding context. So, we do work hard to help break down the massing. As you can see here in the corner, brick volume, there is a clear entrance. There's a tower element, a vertical element with the windows that help identify where the main entrance is to the building. And then, moving down to the both sides of the building, we step down to help with scale, creating an attic story in the top two floors, and also using some bays to help with rhythm and also breaking down the scale along the street wall as well. We're proposing to do as much transparency and glazing at the ground floor as possible. We always feel like it's really important, especially on public streets, to emphasize the activity within the building and create this sense of inside and outside interaction. Moving over to the Cabot Street Building, it's a smaller scale, obviously, so we were looking to emulate some of the more triple-decker size and feel around the area, a little bit more contextual in design, but utilizing, again, a mixture of brick, cementitious, and cementitious siding. The entrance here is proposed in the middle, the small canopy, and, again, the corner element with the community room behind it. And that concludes the presentation.
Happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Thank you. So, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public, and then, I'm sure the board members will have a couple of questions. Okay. So, at this point in time, anybody seemingly like to speak in favor of this project? Anyone in favor?
Hello?
Yeah. Just please come to the microphone and give me your name and address, please.
Hi. So, my name is Kathy Cam, and I'm currently a resident at 652 Merrimack Street. I appreciate the opportunity to share my concerns about the proposed development. I'm actually fully supporting the development of our city, but I'm concerned about the potential impact to the building that I'm currently living in. I saw that there's a new four-story building at Cabot Street, right? I'm not sure whether that would block more of our views and also natural light, especially in the bedrooms and living rooms, which are already quite limited due to the public housing building across the street. So, actually, I'm actually supporting this development, but I sincerely hope that the developer can consider some adjustments to the building's height or design to minimize the obstruction to light and views, and to ensure that the project doesn't compromise with, you know, our views of our home. So, yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Yes, sir. Just give your name and address, record.
Good evening, sir. My name is Juan Castaneda. I'm representing the neighbors of that area. I live in Merrymack Street, 744 Merrymack Street, next to the corner since 1997. And, like you know, it's a very critical corner. It's an accident every month, at least. My family lost five cars, also a car goes straight to my living room, destroyed the front of my house. I have to build it again. Three weeks ago, my sister got hit by, I mean, her car. Kids in the corner get hit by the cars all the time. Our city council for this district, Mr. Rada, I hope, I thought he was going to be here tonight, but anyway. So, we're concerned about the parking, the traffic. And we know opposed to the develop of the city or the building. It looks so beautiful, but what we concern is the parking lot. We have no place to park. The other thing is, you know, the kids from the university, they have houses, I mean, they have apartments and rooms over there, so every day or every night is a problem to park. So, it's 90 units who want to be building the corner. So, it's at least one car for unit, maybe, I don't know. And we're concerned about how they can help us. We're not here to oppose to the building. We're asking for help. That's what we need. We want, please, to help us with the traffic right there. They propose, I was, because I don't have enough information, I just came tonight to learn about what is the project, and also to let my neighbors know what's going on. I took a couple pictures to explain to them what's going on. So, my, our concern is where, if they're going to build more parking for them. It's 90 units right in Decatur. It's a very critical corner. Every morning, it's five, six boxes to pick up the kids, to bring to school, then in the afternoon, they drop them in the corner. So, we just want to know how they can help us. We don't oppose. We want them to build it. It's okay, but how they can help us, how they can help our neighbor, our neighborhood. This is our concern. We just asking many times, let me explain you what happened. In those corners, it's always an accident when the people come from Decatur. They don't have a sign to let the people to don't park in the corners. So, when the car comes, they can't see who's coming or who's going. So, last year, I was fifteen, I lost my truck, because somebody goes straight, boom, destroyed my truck. So, I have to soup them, that way they can pay my truck, and that's one of them. But, we lost five cars right in the corner. So, we just want, we just asking the housing to help us to, we don't oppose. It looked beautiful, it helps to develop the city, the new structure, but what we want is, please, how they can help us. Because our neighbors, we come to the city council, he only show up and paint the lines when elections day. So, then after that, nobody show up. And we hear, it's a camera there, too. They have a traffic camera there. Let me tell you something. My wife bought a car, and she was ready to go to work eight o'clock in the morning. When she start the car, the car fall down to the side. Somebody was trying to take the tires. So, we come to the city and ask for the video, and the camera says, oh, nobody have access to that. That's for traffic, but so, so what is the, you know what I mean? It's like, it's kind of hard for us, for our neighborhood. We just learned to live with all the issues we have there, but please, what we asking is the, the, the people who want to build this, I mean, the housing department, to help our neighbor. It's good to, you know, to everybody be blessed, you know what I mean? Many people, we're going to have houses available for them, but what about the people who live there? Please, help us to fix that problem. Put at least signs that people don't park in the corner. I can see they're going to put something for the traffic, right? So, that's what we asking. We don't oppose. The only thing we want, you please, help us. That's the only thing we want. Yes, listen to us, help us, how you can help us to tell them to build something to protect our kids or neighbors and our parking, because I don't know how they're going to do with the parking, but it's okay. We just figured it out. The only thing is, please, help us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sure, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Those are actually amazing comments, and we agree. We agree completely. We agree completely. This is an opportunity. This is an opportunity that we have been working closely with the Housing Authority and with the city of Lowell, that this is an opportunity to correct some of the issues that you've seen on Merrimack Street. For too long, for a very long time, the infrastructure in this area of the neighborhood has been failing. It's been totally failing. And with this project, we're working hard, again, with the Housing Authority and the city, to rebuild this infrastructure in a way that goes beyond just the housing and beyond just the walls of what we're proposing here, but to rebuild all of the sidewalks, to rebuild all of Decatur Street, not just on our property, but we are raising the funds, again, working with the Housing Authority and the city, to rebuild Decatur Street in its entirety, including all of the infrastructure under that street. We're looking to rebuild all of the sidewalks, again, around these two sites, as well as to create better pedestrian connections, bump outs, to increase the visibility at Decatur Street and Merrimack. So, we've been, actually, we actually asked the city, we would like to build curb extensions that would create that buffer so that people could better see when cars are coming out of Decatur Street or turning in any of those areas, so that there's more space on the sidewalk for the kids when they get dropped off for buses, or any of the people who are taking the Lowell Regional Transit Authority buses that go right on Merrimack Street. We are providing bicycle facilities within the building, bicycle storage within the building, and also working with the city to increase the bike infrastructure along Merrimack Street. They have a proposal that will bring bike infrastructure right down Merrimack Street, down Decatur Street, and down sort of the Merrimack Street alley extension, and that's something that we're working closely with the city on. So, we agree with you. We agree with you completely. This is an opportunity that we see that we can really work, again, with the city, to improve this part of the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this project?
Hello? Yes. My name, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Carl Kuffner. I own the building on the corner of Decatur and Salem Street. It's 87 Salem Street, and I've had that building for 30 years, and there is, it's an impossible situation for parking right now. You know, I'm fortunate enough to have a little parking area for my tenants, but if they ever need to park in the street, there's hardly ever anything available, and there's all the housing units across the street. A lot of those people have cars, and there just isn't enough room for all these cars. And even if you have 25 parking spots, you know, inside the building, available, and you have 100 and, I believe, 18 units, at least probably 75 of those units are going to have cars, if not more. And there is just nowhere for those additional 50, 60 cars that people might have, where they could park. And God forbid, wintertime, if there's major snowstorms, these people are going to have to park miles away. There's just nowhere to park. The parking is horrendous. So, in that respect, I would say I'm opposed, because there's just nowhere to park. And 25 parking spots is just not enough, is just not enough parking spots for 118 units.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Or anybody want to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? I know one of the concerns have come up about the parking, but as it is, it's in this multifamily mid-rise overlay district. With this new zoning district that was created, they don't have to have any parking spots. So, that part of that new zoning district doesn't have parking, so at least they're proposing the 25. I know it's in a couple of different extra zones, but at least in the multifamily mid-rise zone, they're limited on what they need for parking, so. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else? At that time, I'll turn it over to the board members.
If I could, I'll just add that with the infrastructure improvements that I mentioned on Decatur Street, we'll actually be creating nine new parking spaces that don't exist today, as well.
I mean, that's a, to me, that's a big improvement, Decatur Street. I mean, that's been, even going to visit the site, coming down and around it a couple of times, and coming out to Merrimack Street and trying to look up Merrimack Street.
Yes.
It's tough. I mean, so anything you do...
And we're trying to balance, we're trying to balance a whole bunch of things here, so that's...
I mean, it's not a long street, but it's, with the whole Housing Authority there and everything on Salem Street, across the street, it's a connecting street, even though it's just a one-way, but...
Right.
And it's a busy street, from one-way street between the two main streets.
Yeah.
Okay. So, as indicated, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any questions? I know Attorney Martin, you said most of the city comments, you had no problems with at all?
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I mean, basically, was, they wanted the Transportation to Mayor Management Plan for the City Train Engineer, stormwater permit, and apply with the Engineering Department comment, and I think a lot of those were already addressed by your people in regards to the sidewalks on Decatur Street, the curbing.
A number of the engineering comments go to the condition of Decatur Street, and that's something we plan major...
Yeah, and I think that generally proves most of them, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. President.
So, just a question, because I love the design, and you've mentioned the bump outs of the sidewalk on Decatur and Merrimack Street. So, that's going to have, you're going to have to have that approved by the city, or is that? I know it's in the architectural rendering, I...
Yes, yes. So, we've started, we've had those discussions with the city, so we'll work with the Planning Department and DPW, as well as the Engineering Department, to make sure that it meets all, meets or exceeds all city standards and is coordinated. As I mentioned, the city is planning new infrastructure, new bike infrastructure on Merrimack Streets. We want to make sure that whatever we propose will fit with what they are planning, and we've agreed to do that.
Now, is that, is, I guess, are you, are you widening Decatur a bit to create the parking?
Just a little bit, like 18 inches of widening. The right-of-way actually goes beyond the existing curb area, so we're able to work almost entirely within the existing right-of-way.
Okay.
And, again, we're working closely with the city to make those alignments.
All right. So, are you going to need some sort of an easement from the city, or is that going to be...
We're going to work with the city to adjust the lot line. So, we're actually going to give the city some of our property, a very, very small, very, very small piece of property.
Okay. And then, the bump ups, that doesn't require any city council approval, that's just purely engineer, engineering and...
I don't think so, yeah.
Just the engineering department? Yeah, okay, okay. No, I love the concept, and I think that'll address the issues with people parking. People parking, because it's actually going to make that a little narrower, so it's going to prevent people from parking right at the corner.
Right at the corner, exactly. To address some of the...
To address that issue.
...that were brought up. It'll actually increase visibility significantly, both for pedestrians as well as drivers.
Yeah, no, I picked up on that, especially when the gentleman mentioned that, and so, that's what, that's what that would accomplish, so. And then, obviously, having more eyes on the street, as was mentioned in the presentation, hopefully, that's going to minimize some of the activity that's been going on there, and somebody trying to steal your tires and coming out with your car on the blocks is not a, it's not a, not a way to start your day, that's for sure. First of all, compliments to the design of the building. We look at this all the time, you know, when you're walking, you've got, really, it brings down the scale and it gives you that bit of intimacy, but then you scale it back. I love the upper floors being recessed, that's a technique, so it really, it creates the illusion that the building's not quite as tall as what it is. Compliments on the architectural plan does not, rendering does not have more trees than the landscape plan. That's been a... the landscape plan. That's been a bugaboo of mine. We've had architects come in here and make it look beautiful, and then the landscape plan we're approving doesn't match what was on the board or on the screen. So the dormitories that were gonna go into the acre site, I took that architect the task on that one and the engineer, because that was a complete, beautiful architectural rendering, and the landscape plan had half the plantings that were on there. So compliments on that. I like the different texture. It's everything we talk about. We've been talking about for years here when we look at this type of construction. Obviously, you guys are in the business, and especially, it fits, it really complements what went on at the acre crossing at Turney Martin. You know that. You were involved in that project. So obviously, I think it complements that. To the chairman's point, and to any of the residents, I mean, it went before the city council, it came here for a vote and recommendation, but this is in the overlay district, it does not require parking. I do appreciate and respect the fact that you recognize that there are going to be some people that are gonna want some parking, that will need some parking. There's some, you know, there's some three-bedroom units, there's two-bedroom units, and there's singles. In all, honestly, I think a three-bedroom unit or two-bedroom is probably gonna be looking for some use of having cars there. So I think that's a, from a practical perspective, I think that makes sense. I think it'll be a disincentive for development if, in fact, they're building units, then they realize, even though it's not required to have parking, are we gonna really be able to rent this? All right, so I think from that perspective, I think that works. You know, the Mercia Center, that, that ground there has been used for parking. It's dirt. The picture showed it. It's gonna be a vast improvement to the urban landscape. The other parking as well, I mean, the other corner as well on Cabot. I'm just so familiar with the area. I, yeah, I was baptized at the St. Jean de Baptist Church, and made sure my daughter was baptized there before closed. And fortunate enough, I know the owner, and my daughter was married, and we had the reception in that St. Jean de Baptist Church, so. And my mother grew up on Moody Street, which is right on the back, and my father worked for decades as a carpenter for the St. Jean de Baptist Parish. So that area means a lot to me. It was all part of Little Canada at one time as well. And it, I think this is gonna be a nice addition. I understand there's gonna be some challenges with the parking still, but it is, it is part of the overlay district. So, you know, I commend you. I think most of the, the issues or concerns DPD voiced in the memo, and council, you've obviously acknowledged, those are, those are all reasonable conditions that you would go through in the process.
Right.
Anyway, so there's nothing unusual there.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jerry. Caleb?
Yeah, I concur with Member Fisher about the parking. Think this definitely would be a concern, but, so, so I really would like to see the Transportation Demand Management Plan now, ideally today, but I know that, you know, that's one thing that DPD staff can review afterwards, so. And they do, they do hold them to a standard, so, so I'm okay with that. With regard to, I know one of the neighbors mentioned about light and veils, so two things. I think, first of all, the overlay district allow up to, how many floors, I remember? Is it like, is there a limit to it?
Yeah.
Up to six, so, okay. So your larger building, or below that?
Where this neighbor was, that's the four-story building.
Four-story building, okay.
And I'll mention that we had a previous iteration of the plan that was five stories. We actually reduced it for, you know, especially, particularly this reason, we tried to bring the building away from the property lines as much as we could.
I see.
And, you know, and we, we actually, we were actually just discussing this. We care about all sides of the buildings, whether you can see it from the main streets or not. So, you know, we're gonna make sure that the rear of the building, the side of the building is attractive, that the materials, we don't skimp on the materials, and that it's something that all the neighbors will, will hopefully be able to appreciate.
Thank you. And one thing about the lighting, shadows. So we've been dealing with the new overlay district for a little while, and one of the things that the zoning ordinance asked for is a shadow study. Have you, have you done a study, and have you provide staff a shadow study?
No, nothing.
No, I notice it's not an applet, but I'm just asking, yeah. It's a requirement, actually.
Yep. So we, we have not submitted that?
Okay.
Yeah, it's not typically required, and we did not.
So that's something that we should discuss about what to do about it?
Yeah, so, yeah, it came out, actually, Billy, I think it was, not, what was the other project? Not the, one of the projects right down the street from there required it.
Suffolk Place.
Yeah, Suffolk Place. It came up then. So what happened was, it says, under this new zoning district, which takes the M form, as they call it, mid-rise overlay district, sun and shadow, the sites and buildings shall minimize shadows on residential uses in public open space. Applicants shall include a shallow analysis with before and after scenarios. So would that be something?
So, I mean, you know, it's across a major thoroughfare, right? Suffolk Place, it was someone direct abutter within five feet of the building. This is-
I mean, this tells us that, you know-
Thirty feet.
Yeah. So I mean, is it something that you could give us a shadow? And also, it says you shall, doesn't say-
We're happy to provide that. We think that there's no impact, and we're confident-
I mean, for us, you know, when this came out, it tells us, you know, it's not flexible on us, like shall, I mean, shall means-
Shall means shall.
Yeah.
We're happy to-
You know what they say, you know, yeah.
Yeah, we're confident that there's no undue impact to the abutters, and we're happy to provide that.
Correct. All right, so.
So would, would that be a manable wisdom condition, or we'll have to push?
I wouldn't have a problem if it'd been a conditional approval, and obviously, you send it to staff, if staff has an issue, they submit it to us, and we address it.
That'd be great.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
Yes.
Yeah, I-
Because we've had them before, and then they see the shadows, and, you know, doesn't really tell us what we do with them after that, you know? It says, you gotta submit it.
Yeah.
Right? Like, it's like when your kids go for your driver's license. Mom and dad gotta say they spent so many hours in the car with them. They either did, or they didn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a palm unless it is have a particular big, like, lengthy. I mean, I remember is doing, you're doing different time of the year, different time of the day, and if there's particularly, a particular building that is always shaded, it will be of a concern, but-
And we, yeah, we're very familiar with those, and it's no big deal to provide it at all.
So it's not something that, yeah.
Okay. Another question about a similar topic. Are there any lighting proposed on the, on the exterior wall?
Yeah, there, there is. We have not fully designed that, because we're not quite at that stage, but we do want this to be an attractive, again, a real asset to the neighborhood. So we do plan to have some lighting that will, again, enhance the attractiveness of the building, but we'll make sure, part of that and part of the scope of that is make sure that there is no glare, that there's no light spoilage across outside of the property. It's really focused on our building just as a highlight, to make it, again, more attractive at all times of day. And to the, the point brought up earlier, kind of helps the, the sort of feeling of this part of the neighborhood at night to have some, a lighting that's appropriate.
So would they be on the ground level only, or also upper levels, or, and also what type of light system are you thinking, like, are they going to?
Matt, you wanna address this, like, some uplighting and some downlighting? We've designed-
Yeah, we've designed them all sorts of different ways, and I think the approach that we would take here is obviously focus on the entrances to the buildings, so the corner at Merrimack Street and Decatur. At all egresses at the, throughout the building, we have to provide some emergency lighting by code. But I think we would look to elevate the Merrimack Street side a little bit, slightly, and usually what we do is it's up-down, or it's just down, like you can imagine, just little, little lights, and we've done different ways, where it's just a cylinder or a little hood. It varies. I think the other part that we would be really, that we're gonna be exploring significantly is the connector between Salem and Merrimack Street on the backside, that pedestrian area, because that's gonna be critical to make sure it's well lit.
I see. Thank you.
And I'll note that, you know, safety and security is very important to us, both for our residents as well as outside the building. So we have professional management who will be on-site. We've designed the whole sort of public spaces specifically so that there are eyes on the street, and we'll have an extensive camera system at both buildings.
Okay, thank you for your information. Another question I have is about, I know we talked about Decatur Street, and, and again, appreciate the effort that you, you invest in, into rebuilding the street. Are there any concerns with where the garage exit is, with regard to site distance, and whether there will be any, I guess, beeping, or mirrors, or something that, that weren't people, that cars coming out, or there's enough space in front of it? It's pretty narrow out there.
Yeah, so our team looked very closely at that. We discussed it both with the city and with our team extensively, and we actually modified the design specifically for that reason. We think that there are no conflicts, there's no issues, and we think that it works well with vehicular traffic that we expect.
Okay, great. Lastly, can you, can you help? Or, I don't think it's mentioned, but maybe in, in the plans, but what, what is the arrangement for trash pickup and, and-
Yeah, yeah.
And how would they be stored, for example, with doing, doing, you know, before pickup?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question as well, and another thing that we're really always keyed in on as well, because we don't just build these, we have to manage them in the long term, so trash management is very important. So both buildings have trash chutes. They will have interior trash collection areas, and then on pickup days, the small dumpsters will be wheeled out, or small containers will be wheeled out and picked up, and then immediately go back in. So all of the trash is really managed inside these two buildings.
And is the trash pickup going to be private, not the city service?
Yes, it's a private pickup.
Private pickup, okay. How, how are you going to assign the limited number of parking spaces to tenants?
It's a, that is a good question. It is probably going to be by lottery, so we'll probably work with the tenants. Again, we don't expect that all of the tenants will have cars. This actually is a walkable part of the city. We're going to work, again, to make it as walkable and accessible as we can, and to provide alternative modes. Some people are gonna have cars, and we're gonna manage that.
Okay. I know I have a lot of questions, so bear with me. Let's see. I just lost my thought, but maybe we'll give it to Dan first. If I think of it, I'll come back.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first would like to thank the group for coming to invest in Lowell. I appreciate Attorney Martin's pitch to us. I shook my head the last time he came before us. He came in the same zone, and he basically said he doesn't need to have any parking, which is mind-blowing to me. I would tell anybody out there that is listening, that if you don't want this type of zoning, that you have to talk to your counselors. If you want parking, you have to talk to the city and the counselors to get parking, because parking is going to be a problem, as recognized by the proponent. You've recognized the situation. The buildings are beautiful. They're gonna be awesome. I did have a question for Mr. Briere, who's sitting in the, in the audience. I was just wondering, because of the problems that we have in the other common, do we have similar problems on the north common in that area? We don't.
We don't. We're only experiencing those problems in the heart of that particular area.
Yeah.
So, corner?
Yeah. Yeah.
You have a restaurant in that area, and as you know, we've developed, we're experiencing that problem, because unfortunately, our buildings just have to sit in that area.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Briere. Appreciate it. Appreciate the lighting, especially in that, that walkway. That is gonna be an area that, you know, for security reasons. I was curious on, you mentioned up to 80% AMI. How many units are 30%, 40%, 50%? What are we looking at as far as a disbursement? Because one of the things I keep hearing with many of the studies that DPD presents us in their master plans and housing plans are, is that many of the people in Lowell can't afford a rent, never mind, you know, so-
Exactly.
It needs to be substantially below-
Yes.
Rate.
Yes. So at least 20 of the, 20% of the units will be restricted to families who earn up to 30% of AMI, but, but 90 of the 118 units will be supported with operating resources from the Lowell Housing Authority and from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, where those residents will pay only up to 30% of their income, no matter what it is. They cannot go above 50% or 60% of area median income, but they could reside in those units and be able to afford those units, because they will have operating subsidy that will be attached to that unit. So if they're making 10% of their median income, they would only be paying, you know, up to 30% of that income, if that makes sense.
Okay, so Trinity's being subsidized by the federal government, kind of like a-
By the state and the federal government. That's exactly right.
Okay, all right. It's kind of like the, reminds me of the elderly housing program. You know, they only pay a percentage.
Yes, yes, very, very similar.
Okay.
So that's where, you know, it really is housing for all, because, you know, you have some working families who can afford it, and they pay a little bit more because they can. But if you can't, if you have a more modest job, or you're disabled, or you're elderly, or a senior, you have almost no income, you only pay 30% of whatever that income is, which may be zero, honestly.
Will there be restrictions indicating this?
It will be, it will have that affordability in perpetuity.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I have no further comments. I think it's an excellent project. Like I said earlier, I'm very happy with cleaning up that Decatur Street. I think that makes that whole cut through, like I said earlier. Like I said, there were three or four proposed conditions from staff, and you want to do the shadow analysis, so I have no problem with the project. I think it's, it's gotta look nice and help clean up that area. As we're heading up Merrimack Street now, with the other additional development, I'm going in there. It's really starting to bring that neighborhood together.
We just need one vote for a site plan, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. The applicant shall submit a Transportation Demand Management Plan to be approved by the City Transportation Engineer. The applicant shall obtain a stormwater permit from the Lowell Regional Waste Water Utility. And the applicant will comply with the Engineering Department's comments provided in the staff memo. And beyond that as well is specifically working with the City Engineers Department for the curb extensions on Decatur Street. I think that's, that's critical in, in this. I really do. And the applicant shall provide a shadow analysis to DPD for review.
Motion on the floor, in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. The site plan is approved. Four in favor, and none against. We wish you well. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much.
Good luck with the project. Thank you. Let us know when you're breaking ground, Bill. Invite us. Okay. Moving along on the agenda, do we have any further updates or comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were going to, weren't we going to put election of offices?
Oh, yeah, we meant to add the Fran-
Before then, December, no?
Yeah, I think, we meant to add the Fran last meeting- Yeah, I think, we mentioned at the fan last week, they actually got to put it on the agenda, so maybe we'll follow up. Can we make a note on that?
She added, it's on the next agenda, December.
Is that possible?
Okay, all right, all right.
Any other updates?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just briefly, I have had the pleasure of joining the Community Preservation Committee. I don't know, there's 12, 13, great, seriously, great proposals for community preservation I appreciate being volunteered for that position. It, we, we went through half the, half the applications, at least hearing them. We're going to go through the other half in December, and then apparently discuss them and make recommendations in January and February for the council, so that's my update.
Yeah, so what I understand, you guys make recommendations to the council, and they accept?
Yeah, apparently, I wanted to know, are we just giving them a potpourri and they pick from? No, we, we give them targeted, these are the ones that we propose, and then they have to say yea or nay.
Do you, like, give them any certain order? Like, like, what do you say, here's 10, or we say, we, we, here's 1 through 10, but the most important we start with is 1?
Oh, I don't know. We haven't got there.
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, no, it is a good question.
Well, here's 10, you know, we feel strong for all of them, but we really like number 1, going down the list.
I think the requests are, like, asked for, if I had to ballpocket, about 9 million, and we only have, like, 1.5. So it'll be interesting to see how it's carved up, and what they do, but we have some experienced people, you know, we have Mr. Shea, and, you know, we have Adam Backy, and so, and a lot of the DPD staff that are, they're very helpful, so, but it has been an interesting process.
And I know by reading it in the paper in the past, sometimes they will, they give up multiple months, but they only, sometimes they only give a portion of what they're asking for, because they don't have the funding to give everybody what they're asking for.
Yeah.
So you get a little relief in that whole basket.
Yeah, you might give them 50 grand, but, you know, it's something, sure.
But one time, I think even City Hall was asking for something at one point.
Yeah, no, it is interesting that, you know, some of the groups that come out, I think Merrimack Valley Partnership had an application that came forward, what was it, One Forward Lowell or something like that? They came forward with an, with an application, so a lot of good applications, it's, it's great to see. I do think that there are a couple of areas that we have no applications in, and I think one is recreation, I think, Dylan, does that sound right?
This year, that's, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, there's none, you know, so apparently what they do is they set out, set aside, you know, some funds for that area, and it just goes to next year, so. But it's interesting, if nothing else. It's not the bridge, though.
Well, as I said, Jerry, in the past, one of the things was that Rowley Tree Farm.
Oh, yeah.
JVC Park.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great, that was a great project.
To keep that as educational land, you know?
Yeah, 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 so, that's a report of progress.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any updates? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned. Good night, thank you, everyone.